Yes. Oh, that was it. Ox. I did this immediately.
Calm down, Council members.
I'd like to call to order the April 22nd study session of the Newport Beach City Council. May I have a roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
With the exception of...
I'm sorry, with the exception of Councilmember Daigle, who has an excused absence.
Public comments?
A yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on study session, closed session, and regular meeting agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
All right, I would like, before we get started, just like to mention to those in the audience that we have a large camera setup in the middle of the audience that's here to threaten everyone in the room. Oh, I guess that's wrong. It's the architects that are here that wish to do some additional photography, so don't let them bother you. With that, we'll go to study session, first item.
Public comment?
I got some wrong advice here. All right, Jim, tell us what to do.
Thank you, Mayor Hill and members of the council. My name is Jim Moser. I'm not sure the microphone is working. I hope you can hear me. As a non-agenda comment, I wanted to talk to you for a moment about the city's master fee schedule. When you last looked at that in October, each line was numbered, so I can tell you with confidence that it specified 767 different fees that we charge for services the city provides. Like the records retention schedule that you were looking at and will be in a few minutes, these massive catch-all documents tend to become disorganized closets of city governance, and when one looks into those closets, the entries are rarely tidy or in some cases even rational. My reason for looking at the master fee schedule was I heard that the city staff, without seeking your advice, as I've told you before, was renting out the old city council chamber on Newport Boulevard as a worship site for a newly emerging religious group on the peninsula. I have some general concerns about the relationship between church and state, but what I was trying to do was to determine if we, as taxpayers, were subsidizing the group, the growth of that particular group, by offering a place for their services at less than our cost, which is a kind of religious subsidy that is explicitly prohibited by the California Constitution. What I found is that for each room we rent, staff has proposed, and you have approved, seven different rates for different kinds of groups, even though your only policy directive in the cost recovery section of the municipal code calls for all rentals to recover 50% of the city's cost. As best I can tell, the finance department thinks that the recreation department established this multi-tiered structure, and the recreation department thinks either the finance department or you established it, and no one knows which of the many rates represents the 50% recovery or who decided what the city cost was. Moreover, a year after opening this new city hall, one would assume the lines that invite rental of a city council chamber applies to this room, even though city staff believes those entries apply to the old abandoned city council chamber, and they think that this one, unlike the old one, is not available for rent. They've also been renting the new community room without any rate approved by you and are guessing you don't want to rent any of the many new smaller meeting rooms that we have in our spectacular new city hall. I have no idea if that is the direction that you want, but I think it would be a good subject for a future study session. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment at this point in time? If not...
Mr. Mayor, can I just make a comment on this? Normally, I would not rise to debate to speak to this matter, but one of the issues that we always grapple with with the peninsula is the proliferation of bars and of people congregating in front of houses and smoking and all kinds of other things that denigrate the neighborhood and property values. And here we have a group of people bringing a church and a youth program to the peninsula that I just think is great. Whether it's this church or other churches who do that, that helps enhance the quality of life in the peninsula for everybody who lives there and particularly for young people. This is a building that has been abandoned, for which they, by the way, power washed it on their own dime for free, that would otherwise sit there and denigrate until the time that the coastal commission, in its own sweet time, gets around to approving the hotel that we're going to put on that site. So I think they're really doing a great service to help the neighborhood, to enhance the community and the entire peninsula community, and I think your comments are entirely misplaced.
I would just add to that, I care not one whit about the issue of whether we charge $25 an hour or $75 an hour or whatever it might be for the use of that facility. I completely endorse and agree with Councilmember Curry's comments.
I would say my only concern is that we charge the same fees and we be consistent, no matter what kind of a group it is.
I would agree.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment? If not, then we'll move on to clarification items on the consent calendar. Councilman Hen?
I have none.
Councilman Curry?
I have none.
Councilwoman Gardner?
I have two. Number six, the San Miguel Park. I notice we're replacing a lot of concrete and everything. Just hope staff will keep an eye out for opportunities to use more permeable surfaces in order to do the cutouts and things for our good water management practices. And then on number 14, the business report, on page seven, which is the expenses, all of the expenses that they were listed were a decrease. Until you get to the very bottom one, it says on mine, it reads like 489%? Is that actually? That was the increase? 489? We spent almost five times as much?
I don't have it in front of me, so let me ask Dan to take a look at that.
All right, I mean, I just, for some clarification at some point. Thank you.
Councilman Petros?
I have none.
Councilman Selidge?
I have nothing.
And I have nothing. We will now go to the first item, second item, on the study session, landscape concept for Dover Drive.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. If you recall back in the budget session last year, one of our projects was to rehabilitate the Dover Drive medians as part of our pavement replacement project. We wanted to bring that back to you tonight at council's request to review what we're planning on doing on the medians, so we'll go through that tonight. Before that, though, I asked Mike Sinicori, Assistant City Engineer, to be here and go through a little bit of the schedule on the Dover Drive sewer replacement that's going on right now to give the folks a little update, and that ties into our schedule. With that, Mike will be introducing our two consultants tonight who are working on the project, and they'll go through a brief PowerPoint for you, and then we'll take your questions. Mike?
Afternoon, Mayor and members of council. It's a pleasure to be here to talk about this sewer project and landscaping that's going to be following it. Actually, today was actually a good day. We spent about two hours with the sanitation district staff going over this project schedule, and I do see a light at the end of the tunnel on this job for those that live near it. Just as a reminder, this project began back in July up by the Mariners Park. We did that with the idea that the school would be out of session, and we're going to get in and get out while there's no children in and around the large equipment. We then moved down to the highway and started encountering many issues: utilities in the way, concrete structures, just a very tough, tough environment there down the highway working at night.
Mike, were a lot of these just unexpected? We didn't know that there were utilities there?
Completely unexpected. One of the concrete structures was just actually an abandoned old storm drain that was dead center of the sewer trench, and we had to move the line over. And as we moved up the hill, we found just an enormous amount of groundwater that we just physically could not do the construction without moving the sewage and the groundwater out of the way, and that required a million-dollar worth of bypass pipe. And it slowed us down by about a couple months, maybe three months. So we are behind a bit. The project was supposed to be finished here in July. It's probably going to be October, maybe even into November, but we are moving better. I mean, that's the good news from today. We've made some very good progress this past week or two. We have West Cliff in sight. That is a very tough intersection. We are working with the sanitation district staff, trying to figure out exactly how we're going to get through that intersection, keep traffic flowing. There are road closures coming. I'm not going to beat around the bush. That road will be closed for a period of time in segments as we move up towards the park.
Mike, if I could just interrupt. When he says "we" too, this is an Orange County sanitation district project. The million-dollar change order is on the district right now. We are helping. Mike's doing a fabulous job working with them to reduce their costs, but it's their project, just so the folks at home listening understand when we say "we," it's the sand district.
We are going to talk to the district about when they do have to close the road, about working some extended hours to get in and out like we did down here on MacArthur in the highway, and they are receptive to that. There's cost impacts, but they are making some good progress this week.
I just want to congratulate you on that project because I didn't get a single call. I mean, the warnings and the notices were great, and I guess people just actually did it and didn't, I didn't see too many people backed up at Marguerite and everything. Terrific.
The team really did work well on that. My hat's off to the police department, too, that assisted that first day, and David's here, and that was just very, very helpful, and we're very proud that that worked out as well as it did.
You know, I would just add, on the peninsula, we've had to deal with a lot, you know, over the last several months, but I'd have to also say you and your staff did a terrific job working with the sand district and with the businesses down in Balboa Village and so forth. That project, as disruptive as it is, was very well managed, so we appreciate that, too.
Thank you. We in our public works department, we do take time with the traffic folks and try to really think through these jobs so we minimize the impacts. Dover's been a little bit tougher. We are, if the sand district is willing and the council's interested, we are going to invite the sand district to come back for an update at some point when the council's interested. There is some more pain coming. The Coast Highway project is going to be here in July starting, and that is a two-year project, and it will have some pain down there.
Just in time to catch summer?
We're not going to be impacting the traffic lanes in the summer, and it is scheduled for Labor Day through Memorial Day for two years, and traffic will be flowing. We do have plans to keep traffic moving. The sand district does, on the screen there, we do have a website and a phone number for folks at home, or if you go back to the PowerPoint, that will be posted tomorrow. We also have a map showing where we are with the project. We're in the gold area now, and like we said, we're getting close to the West Cliff intersection. And then how we move from in the magenta up to Mariners and close the road, it will be done in segments, and it will be done in a minimal way to impact traffic flow, but there will be detours and cars moving in different directions to stay away from the construction activity.
Pardon me, Mike, you had mentioned that the segment of Dover from Cliff to 16th is complete. Does that mean that their efforts are now finished and the condition of the highway is to their completed standards? The balance of the rehab is on us?
Yes, Councilman Petros, if you recall, we have a council agreement with this project. They contributed over $600,000 towards the final restoration of that project. So right behind this, and that's the presentation that will follow here, is that road restoration. We'll be changing the median curbs and resurfacing the road sometime January, still the thunder of the next presentation.
So they still do have a responsibility to work with us?
Yeah, that's correct. They've already given us the funds to do that, that final capping on their trench line. That'll entertain any more questions on this, or we'll turn it over to the consultant to do a presentation. We have Dave Grantham here from Civil Works and Thomas Munoz from Nuves, two of our consultants that were in the starting stages of this project. We also have Patrick Arsenega, our senior engineer, that's working with me on the project. Ree Marston's also here from Civil Works. With that, if there are no more questions on the sewer work...
Any more questions of the Dover project?
We appreciate the community's patience on that sewer work.
Mike, when were you thinking about inviting the sand district back for an update?
Actually, they have several things, and as you recall, about five months ago, they were here going through all their projects. They had one in Coast Highway, went up in Costa Mesa. We thought it'd be nice to bring them back maybe June, July, and give you an update on this project will be further along, and then start talking about Coast Highway, and they have another one up towards Costa Mesa that you might want to refresh.
That's an excellent idea, Dave.
Thank you. David?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you very much for your time. I am Dave Grantham with Civil Works. Mr. Tom Munoz from Nuves is with me. We are consultants for the city, working on the Dover Drive-West Cliff Street Rehabilitation Project. We are finishing up conceptual design at this point, and we would like to present our ideas to you at this time with the intent that you can provide any suggestions, recommendations, or directions that we can take into final design. That being said, here's the project. Dover Drive, PCH to Irvine, same section sanitation district's working in, and West Cliff from Dover to Irvine. We have several objectives in the project. Fixing the existing pavement, repairing sidewalk, driveways, updating curb ramps, installing striped bike lanes on Dover Drive in both directions for the entire segment, rehabbing the four city traffic signals, but also connecting the Cliff Drive signal, oh, sorry, yes, with PCH signal, which is Caltrans. That's the only work we'll be doing to the Caltrans signal. Also going to be beautifying and installing landscape, mainly along Dover Drive. It's going to entail modifying the existing center medians, installing new medians, rehabbing the existing islands that are at PCH and at West Cliff, and also replenishing any existing landscaping along the parkways and on West Cliff as needed. Next few slides, I'm just going to walk you through the project limits, starting on Dover. The photographs show existing conditions, and the text shows what we propose to do in those areas. So let's start on Dover Drive at PCH. There's an existing median island there. We'll be removing all the concrete and low shrubs, protecting the sign and mature trees, and putting in new meandering sidewalk and a lot of new shrubs, colorful shrubs. As you work your way up Dover Drive, same thing. Rehabbing that existing median, saving the pine trees, but putting in new shrubs as we move up. There is an existing median as you head towards Cliff Drive. That will be actually made wider, so we'll be installing new trees and landscaping there. As you head north of Cliff Drive, there isn't actually an existing median, so we'll be installing one. So landscaping work, median work, plus pavement rehab work as we move up. As we move north of Cliff Drive, the focus is still pavement rehab and landscaping, but there's existing medians. We'll be rehabbing the medians, making them a little bit wider, but all the existing mature trees, we're going to work with and save those. So the low shrubs will come out, and mature planting will stay.
Can I ask a question on the wider medians? Where are you getting the width in the roadbed from that? Were you taking the...
The medians will be widened maybe one to two feet, and the travel lanes will be adjusted as necessary.
So...
It's actually excess pavement out there, so when we looked at it, we wanted to make sure the bike lanes that went in, and we looked to, some of the lanes are 13, 14 foot. We could narrow those and actually add greenery to the medians, and the curbs are shot anyway. We figured, let's go ahead and put that in where we're at it.
So the bike lane stays the same?
Yes.
And we're going to come down to 12-foot travel lanes?
Yeah, and actually, Dave is going to show you some slides coming up that show the configuration of that.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, so, and then the existing medians continue all the way to West Cliff, so the same focus there. Redoing the medians, keeping the trees, and rehabbing the pavement. As you get north of West Cliff, the road narrows to one lane in each direction, so the focus in this section is going to be pavement rehab and curb and gutter repairs, sidewalk repairs. The street is not wide enough to add medians, so we won't be doing that. And you get from Mariners to Irvine. The park site is on the west side. Again, the focus can only be pavement rehab in this area, but we also will be rehabbing the adjacent surface parking lot for the park. That's Dover-West Cliff. West Cliff, the focus here is pavement rehab and replenishing and refreshing the existing landscaping. We're not going to touch the medians, not make them wider, but we will be just filling in any plants or adding to them as necessary or warranted along the project limits. The existing island is currently turf, well, majority of it is turf. We're going to keep the palm trees but remove all the turf and add a lot of low-height shrubs in that area. So I talked about adding medians on Dover. This slide and the next slide gives a comparison. The top half shows the existing landscape we have on Dover. The bottom shows what we propose to provide. So as you can see, from PCH up to Castaways-16th Street, there's a significant increase in the amount of landscaping we're proposing. And as you head to West Cliff, we're still adding more landscaping areas. There'll be quite a significant change as you drive up and down this street. So we thought about how to lay out the landscaping and the medians. The idea will be to work around the existing mature trees as much as possible. We'll be grouping trees, three or four, then we'll have shrubs or lower-height plantings, then go back to groups of trees as you work your way up the street. And that happens all the way to West Cliff, the same type of layout. Now, we also have the opportunity to make a statement with, in landscaping, with the two median islands at PCH, which is the top left, and West Cliff, the bottom right. In these locations, like I said, keep the existing mature trees but add, I think, more seasonal color to these areas with the shrubs, and can actually make a real focus of these areas with the landscaping. So throughout the season, you can have different colors, different textures going on.
But you're not talking about annuals? You're talking about just things that blossom at different times?
Yes. So there is an existing theme in the area. West Cliff has a theme for landscaping, and Irvine has a theme. So we're kind of taking that cues from those areas and kind of blending it into Dover, so all the three streets kind of mesh, tie together. So here's the ideas we're going to do. As I said, keep the existing trees. We want to add some variable-height planting, so you just don't have tall trees, low shrubs. Removing concrete paving from median noses, which is kind of typical, and adding plant material. And also, under the existing pine trees, we're proposing to put some large boulders or rocks. Typically, plants have a tougher time growing under the pine trees, so we thought this would create a little more interest.
You said that there's themes to these streets. I'm wondering what your interpretation of the Irvine Avenue theme is?
That I will have to have Tom...
I have an idea of it, and I hope that we can share that common theme.
Well, I have a feeling you don't like the theme.
No, 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 no.
No, we're taking portions of it that we feel are good, and the city maintenance and the city felt that it is good items, and we're trying to pull them all together.
My general thought is the Castaways Park is to the east, and that's an ecological area, native plants, it's a native experience, very passive. On the west side, we have a signature learning facility, the Environmental Nature Center, where there's, you know, we're trying to promote and showcase the natural environments there, and I would hope that these medians, while we can retain the mature trees, has some expression of the natural setting that Irvine Avenue has.
Okay. We are proposing potentially four trees for the medians, so three new ones, all varying height. California sycamore, I think the Castaways Park has sycamores in it, so we're tying from that. The two, the bird of paradise and strawberry tree, the city staff have suggested those. They've been doing well in similar situations, so they seem to be doing well in median situations. they seem to be doing well in median situations. Layout for the typical median, just to kind of give you a little more photograph as opposed to an exhibit. Intent is to really kind of combine different scales of plants, so you're not just stuck with something really low, something really high. And here are the typical plants that we plan on using. Again, these have been used currently in the city, city streets, city medians. They're doing well. City staff likes them, and they're also drought-tolerant-type plants, so it'll help with the irrigation demands.
David, I might, mind now, that was a bird-of-paradise bush. That's the difference between the bird-of-paradise and the bird-of-paradise bush that we've had on Superior. It's been very successful.
With that, I would like to have any questions, comments, or direction we can take back into final design.
Questions or comments from council?
Yeah. Was there, maybe this is more for Public Works staff, was there any consideration given as to what the future access to lower castaways might be, and how this median, how these medians are going to work in the future?
We actually did look at that. The biggest thought was maybe a left turn in, and just because the media configuration there, the three triple lefts, there's just no way for us to put a median opening there. Traffic is just not conjoined to that. So it'll be a right-in, right-out of castaways that afforded us the ability to do a better median job there.
I actually do like the concept, and I was pleased to see that you're going to be removing some of the concrete off the islands and plant that, so that the islands will have a much better signature as you come into the area. My, my biggest concern is that it's not something that disrupts the natural setting that's already there, but that blends in with it, and that can showcase not only, you know, what nature provided, but what the city and the private folks have provided at the ENC.
Any further council comments? All right.
We'll take it, then, that we're on the right track in developing this. Okay.
I think, I think you've got nods across the board.
No, we thank you.
I, I think it looks excellent myself, and really happy to see that we're getting more on the program of removing a lot of this stamped concrete in the medians and putting this different kind of plant material. I think it's a progressive step.
It has been.
Thank you.
Yes, would you like my comment?
I agree with what you said, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kind of comments we like to have. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Hill, and members of the council. My name again is Jim Mosher. Regarding the first part of the presentation, we heard about the Orange County Sanitation District Dover Drive project and the city's cooperation with them. I wanted to mention, since it's been going on six months now, at the intersection of Irvine Avenue and Highland, which I think in Costa Mesa is called 20th Street, the Orange County Sanitation District has a, one of these portable trailers with a electronic sign telling people that Dover Drive is closed during certain hours. That trailer is technically on the Costa Mesa side of the street, but it is completely blocking the southbound bike lane, which is used not only by Costa Mesa children, but Newport Beach children on their way to the schools that we have in the Newport Heights area. It has been there for six months. It could quite easily be placed in the median where it would actually be more visible to the motorists than it is. It's kind of under a tree. I have seen people on bicycles veering out around that trailer, which they're forced to go out into the traffic lanes. And if we hear now that the project is going to be going on for another six months, I hope that with our cooperation with the Orange County Sanitation District, they could perhaps find a less intrusive place to put that sign. As to the second part about the landscaping improvements, I perhaps am one of the few people who thought that replacing the historic windrow of eucalyptus trees that we had on Irvine Avenue with a rather sickly line of palm trees was not an improvement. At the time we were anticipating doing that, I seem to recall, it was my suggestion that we consider extending the existing landscaping that we have on West Cliff with pine trees up along Irvine Avenue, rather than introducing the palm trees. So I was very pleased in this presentation to see that the West Cliff and Dover pine trees are going to be retained, and we're not trying to duplicate the row of sickly pine trees that we currently have at great expense on Irvine Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment on this item? Being none, then I think we'll close that and move on to the third item. Staff report, please.
Laelani Brown, the city clerk is going to give this one, so I'll give her a moment to move to the other station there.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Hill and council members. Regarding the records retention schedules, I'll be highlighting a brief, providing a brief history and discussing what, thank you, what hasn't changed, what is being proposed to change, and possibly, which is possibly the audio recording retention. The records retention schedule was updated most recently in 2003, 2006, 2011, and hopefully now in 2014. And the reasons for the updates are due to the state law changes to incorporate better business practices, to include documents not previously included in the 2011 revision, and always to improve efficiencies. And schedules are governed by Government Code Section 34090 et cec. As always, council has a discretion to amend the schedule. The schedule was reviewed and approved by council, and any additions or amendments, not deletions, to the approved schedule are only allowed with the approval of the city clerk and city manager. The additions or amendments are only to allow for records to fully be inventoried into the schedule and to provide the appropriate destruction timeline, or to comply with the changes in state law that occur during each of the retention changes, to ensure consistency with the schedule or council policies. And if you note in the attachment A to the staff report, a majority of the line items in the proposed schedule have not been changed, and the departments have reviewed the proposed changes. Council documents will forever remain permanent records, and these include the minutes, resolutions, ordinances, deeds, the meeting video streams, and the agenda packets that are imaged. And staff training will occur after council adopts the schedule, and the training will be conducted to clarify any staff confusion about maybe terminology, how to handle the documents appropriately, and how to comply with state law and the approved schedule. So some of the proposed changes include an updated timeline to meet state laws or better business practices. Items have been added that were previously not included in the schedule. Some department or division names have changed, so those have been amended. We do not use Granicus any longer in order to have the voting, so that we could have one voting system and agenda management system. So I want to note that we are in the process of transferring those videos into the Novus system. And another proposed change is to allow for a one-time change to council policies, policy or policies in order to comply with any changes to the schedule. The request to change the policies is a one-time request in order to maintain consistency with the schedule. And I'm happy to also include a listing of these policies in the resolution that will adopt the records retention schedule. There has been some concerns about the audio recordings. Currently, they are kept for 30 days or until minutes are approved, so whichever is longer, and whichever is longer will allow time for the public to listen to the audio after the meeting is, if desired. So audio recordings are covered by Government Code 54953.5B and Council Policy A11, which has been in effect since January 1994. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions and receive direction if there are any changes in the council retention schedule.
I have a couple of questions.
Councilmember Hen?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, there's, there's been some implication that staff has unilaterally changed our policy to reduce the amount of records that have been retained. I guess there was some sort of a change regarding these already audio recordings, but can you elaborate? I mean, my understanding is the policy was not changed, but that we discovered we were not executing the policy in accordance with the policy, and we did that. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Correct. The, there are some inconsistencies with our current council policy, which is the 30 days, so that, so the retention schedule was amended to follow the policy and state law.
So the schedule itself was amended, but it was to make it consistent with the policy?
I believe so. I think that happened probably back in 2011 or '12.
Okay.
So the point being, nothing has changed since 2011?
Correct, and the policy's been in place since 1994.
Laelani, though, do you want to talk about the practice that brought about the concern that Mr. Mosher has articulated that, about what, individual departments?
Individual departments were, were not completely following the schedule. They were keeping some of their audio recordings online, and then when it was time to follow the records destruction schedule, they had to pull them off of the internet. So that's where the concern came about, thinking that we were doing something different. In fact, when the audio was on the internet, it probably wasn't following the policy itself, or the records retention.
Meaning that they were on much longer than the policy called for.
Correct.
So nothing has been pulled off any earlier than what the policy or the law has called for?
No.
Yeah, and I think, I think it's important to note that the policy didn't change. It was just how it was being implemented by the different departments.
Any further, a council?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. You said 30 days, but on page 14, it suggests, it looks like you're suggesting a year.
That, because, because there is concern, you can make it to whatever limit you want. You don't, you probably don't want to make it permanent. One year would be the longest we would ever recommend it, and we put that there because of the concerns that were going on with the audio recordings.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any trouble, I think that's a good idea. I'd rather see us be a little more careful and just for that. So I approve of that. I did have a couple of concerns, taking out the individual personalities, taking the positions, that on page, on the second page, where it talks about future changes, that a future amendments to the schedule be made with approval of the city clerk and city manager. I wondered, one, if the city attorney should be involved, because sometimes there are probably legal aspects, but I'll leave that. But I'm also wondering whether, when it comes to the things that the public is most concerned with. I mean, I don't think that, that most members of the public are going to get really focused on how long finance keeps certain minutes or whatever. But they are very concerned about what we do in terms of our meetings and how we record those from the commissions. So I'm not sure that that's a great idea to have a city manager and the city clerk decide that they're going to change the record retention schedule for something like that.
And I understand that. The reason we include, I included that in the, or what would be in the resolution, is if something were new, or a state law completely changed what we have in our records retention, so we are no longer consistent with either state law or our policies, that would probably need to also be changed. Regarding items like that, we would, we would probably bring those back, since we know they're a great concern.
Well, I'd be into really looking at the, at the language, and being sure that we feel very, very comfortable that we don't have suddenly a clashing city admin, which would never happen with us, but city administration, city council, and playing some games. I mean, some cities happen, that does happen. So I'll be looking carefully at that part of it, I think, so.
Okay.
We'll be back.
Councilmember Hen?
Yeah, I think one way to address that issue is to make it clear in the language of the policy that staff does not have the authority to reduce the retention of records or eliminate the retention of records, that staff amendment authority is as to adding records or assuring compliance with state law changes. And in those events, there should be a requirement that they, that council gets a receive and file. Staff made the following amendments, just so that council has some, you know, currency about what's changing in the record retention. And then if any of us up here have a problem with it, we can always raise it as an agenda item at a later time. But at least that way-
I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, at least that way we keep abreast of changes.
Is bringing back the items any changes, or that we add, or just anything in?
I, I think any changes. I mean, it's a simple matter to just write a short note for receive and file for council. Be consented agenda item, lest somebody really sees something they want to talk about.
Councilman Sullage?
Yeah, I had originally had some concerns about the audio recordings, retaining them for a longer period of time, maybe even up to, as we call it, forever, however long that is. And I had some discussions with Dave and Aaron on it, and they convinced me that what the staff's proposing is really, really the common sense way to do it. So I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the way that's being proposed.
I'm still a bit unclear on the audio recordings. Are we, is staff proposing that they, for commissions and committee meetings, is staff proposing that they be kept for one year, or that we keep it at the 30 days?
I'm okay with taking a straw vote if, if, because it, state law does only require a minimum of 30 days. If we want to go longer, we, council has a discretion, but I would need to know.
Yeah, because I think one of the problems I see with the 30 days is, I go to a meeting and listen, and then I can't, I don't go to the next meeting, so I don't see the minutes, and maybe I get busy, and then when I go back and look at the minutes, it's like, well, I don't remember that. I don't, that's not at all the way I remember it. I want to listen to the audio. Well, if I haven't gotten back within that short frame of time, I'm out of luck. Whereas if we have it for a year, that's just more than enough. Somebody can't get it back together in a year.
Yeah, and I think a year's, I know personally for the committees that I chair, I like to put together an annual work plan for the committee. Seems to me it's appropriate to have an annual amount of audio recordings, you know, just to cover the work plan year that the committee is working on, so.
What, Curry?
Well, I think the primary purpose of the audio recording was to help whoever was going to do the written minutes do the written minutes accurately. So once they're done, I will just say, in eight years, I've never gone back and listened to a recording of a committee meeting. And, you know, I question their value, but-
But I think you have, haven't you, Laelani? I've had a question, said, yeah, that's not what I thought I said, and you've gone back and listened to the, to the audio to pick it up, the exact language.
I don't know if it was eight years, but maybe it was.
No, no, I meant, but being with, so there are times when you do go back. Some people do.
I guess too, council and Laelani, just so you're aware, we will not always audiotape every meeting. So there, and there's no requirement in here to audiotape them. For instance, we don't do that with the aviation committee. So I just take the minutes as I'm sitting there at the, at the meeting itself. So these would be four, four meetings where we do take an audiotape, and the recommendation is to go to one year versus the 30 days and, or until-
So which ones do we do?
Laelani might have to help me here. I just know the ones that I attend as to which are and which are not.
Yeah, we have about 20 committees, so I don't know specifically which ones they are. I know a lot of the ones that come out of community development do audiotape, and some of Public Works's committees, some of finances.
Well, I noticed that at the Arts Commission and at the Coastal Bay Tidlands Committee, it's new name, that whoever is taking the minutes usually has a recorder. So that's not considered an official audio recording, then?
Yes, it is.
That's just to help someone with minutes?
Actually, it is in this case.
Okay.
It was, if someone, and that's a thing that I discussed with Mr. Sullage, there's a lot of mechanical and human error in that. It's a little recording device in someone's hand. It may lose its batteries, it may not, they may not, we may not start it on time. We may have to flip the tape if we're not using MP3. So to me, it's a very imprecise thing to store, but we want to be responsive to, to what the council and the community wants to save. I think the minutes are the official transcripts of the meeting as adopted.
Yeah, the issue, the issue here is that, though, just in my experience with the committees, that the taking of the minutes is a variable practice. Some minutes are very detailed and lengthy, and, you know, show discussion back- Some minutes are very detailed and lengthy and, you know, show discussion back and forth. Other minutes are more action-oriented. So in view of the variation in minute-taking style, I feel good about keeping it, and I, for one, don't mind if there's an 18-minute gap occasionally in our tapes, so.
Any further council comments? Anyone from the audience, the public, that would like to speak on this item, please come forth.
Mayor Hill and members of the city council, my name is Jim Mosher. It is common for speakers at city council meetings throughout California to hoist red flags by raising the specter of the city of bell. I mention bell only because it demonstrates the fundamental importance, if things go wrong, of retaining enough records to be able to piece together what went wrong, which I believe is why California law prohibits the destruction of the people's records without authorization from you, our elected stewards of the public trust. But in a good city, and I hope Newport Beach is a good city, the value of retaining complete and accurate records of the city's actions, acts, and aspirations goes far beyond that. Our current and retained records are the key to transparency, to an informed electorate, and to informed decision-making by you, the city council, by the many commissions and committees that work under or alongside you, and by the city staff itself. I cannot in three minutes provide any intelligent comment on the 170 pages of retention rules that you are reviewing this afternoon, other than to say how bizarre I think it is that we allow the schedule to be copyrighted by an outside private consultant so that the public who paid for it and whose records it refers to cannot copy or carefully review it. I would, though, point out that the paid consultant says on page one that although the schedule says when documents can be destroyed, it does not actually, in most cases, authorize the destruction. Since state law requires you to do that authorizing, I would hope that as our elected stewards of the public trust, you would be asking how the authorization for the actual destruction happens in Newport Beach. The schedule does not explain that, or why the manifest of records to be destroyed, going far beyond audiotapes, is no longer brought to you for public review and approval as it once was. I also have to question severely the efficiency of a city government if, as the staff report says, we are paying $100 per year for every 20 gigabytes of storage capacity we use. That should be a one-time cost, not an annual one, and the number quoted seems to be 100 or 200 times the going rate. Electronic storage is cheap, and it's ever getting cheaper. The challenge in this age of scanned digital and paperless records is not one of keeping records, but rather one of keeping them in a way such that the content is meaningfully and quickly available to the public, to you, and to the city staff. That apparently will be the subject of a different study session. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to comment on this item? Seeing none, then, staff, do you feel like you have direction?
I do, thank you, council.
All right. Then, Mr. Attorney, we're going to go into closed session. Do we have a closed-door session today?
Yes, the city council will adjourn to closed session to meet with Dave Kiff and Terry Cassidy, our labor negotiators, negotiators regarding negotiation with all representative employees.
In that case, we will recess at this point in time, reconvene with our normal council meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you.